100 Board of Education to Whittier School this evening. I'm Bob Cerny, the principal at Whittier, and I just want to let you know we're very honored and proud to be the host for this evening's school board meeting. Whittier is truly a special place, and that's because of its students, its staff, and just the overall Whittier community. Whittier is proud of the long history it has of serving our students. More to come with Whittier's history with my guest speakers behind me here in a few minutes. First, I would like to recognize the Whittier staff, parents, and students who were able to join us this evening. If they can wave or please stand. There are a few things I want to share with you this evening related to Whittier. First, I want to highlight some of the special things I have seen at Whittier this year. One of my favorite things relates to our students. A favorite part of my job is every day I walk around, and this happens multiple times a day, but just to see the smiling faces, see the joy in our students and the love for being here is just amazing. And whatever happens like in the moments before I do that or walk down a hallway, it's amazing to see that. And I love doing that, just walking around the building and interacting with them. We have an extremely supportive PTA and Dream Foundation. I want to thank them for all the support they provide to Whittier and for all of us. One thing that I want to highlight too is the work of two of our teachers, our art teacher Laura Tufti and occupational therapist April Seacon. They have the opportunity this year to co-teach an art class for our sales students every week. The students within our sale program have autism and require additional support to help address their learning needs. When you walked into Whittier this evening, you might have seen we have a display in the front lobby of some of the art projects they have completed this year, and they're very amazing to look at. And the students do a lot of work in putting those together every week through the collaboration of those teachers. But through this class, the students work on art projects and show their skills, but they also work on skills such as motor planning, self-regulation, handwriting, executive functioning, finding gross motor, all while doing things that they really enjoy doing. It shows in a smaller setting like this that their talents come out and you see the neat, amazing things they can do. Another aspect of Whittier that I would like to share with you is a club that's new to Whittier this year. Meg Moore and Amy Sanahan, two of our fifth grade teachers, with a lot of support from Amy Janovich, another fifth grade teacher, have led our fifth grade leadership club. This club is new to Whittier this year, and this club started because students were asking to help in the building and mentioning they wanted to help with different things in the building at the beginning of the year. So we started this club, and to our surprise, we have over 40, which is well over half of our fifth grade students, volunteered to be a part of this club. And that's fantastic and just shows the character of these students. This club has helped Whittier in a variety of ways. They assisted with a food drive in the fall. They have helped kindergarten students in the beginning of the year as they were learning to navigate the building and where to go. They were just extra hands with our staff that were helping kindergarteners get to where they needed to go at the end of the day and just a reassuring presence for those kids. Helping kindergarten students and first grade students within the classrooms, reading to them or just doing some skill building with them, that was fun. They, every day, help our custodian, Mr. Quintero, with some of the tasks he has to do, which is a huge help to him, and the kids love doing that. And then they've helped our teachers with organizing, sorting things, and just getting curriculum materials ready. And tonight, you will see a presentation that our fifth graders put together. They, as we talked about our library being renovated, obviously, we will not be here this year. We talked about ways they could be involved with that. So we all came up with that they could help do some presentations and share information with the rest of our classrooms, and you'll see the results of that this evening. This is a PowerPoint and a presentation these students created and put together, which I think is amazing to see. So I'm going to turn this over to Sage, Mila, and Angelina, who are going to share their presentation with all of us.
Okay, I just want to say one thing. Thank you for everyone who invited us to come out here tonight, and thank you for everyone who's going to listen to our presentation. Whittier LLC, Summer 2023.
Whittier background. Whittier School was originally built in 1925. Whittier, over the years, has had several renovations. First-grade hallway built in 1950s. Library section built in 1970s. Second-grade hallway area built in 1990s. The library has not been renovated since it was built. The furniture and bookcases have been updated.
Updating Whittier, the facility. Planned improvements to Whittier. Summer 2023 library remodel. Whittier and Johnson are the first schools to get new libraries. 2024, new flooring. 2025, new playground. Speaking of 2025, it's Whittier's 100th birthday. You're all so excited to be celebrating Whittier's 100th birthday in 2025, so hopefully you guys will be a part of that too.
What changes do you notice? Try to picture how it would look. Facts about the library renovation. Everything in the library will be new when school starts in August. Windows will be put in the hallways leading to the library. Skylights will be put in the ceiling to help bring in more light. The floors will be new. They will look like the floor in the music room. The tree in the middle of the library will be removed. Sorry, but we will save parts of it though, which you will see in other places throughout the school.
Facts about the library renovation. There will be large TVs on the walls. The walls by the TVs will be like whiteboards. The library will have more open area. There will be more places for classes and groups of students to work. Bookshelves will be against the wall. There will be more comfy seating around the library. There will be LED lights in the library as well. The LED lights will look like the lights in the front office. There will also be new ceilings and walls.
So here's a video of what the library will look like. Sorry about, if you can't really see it that well, I don't really know how to move it, but, um... Oh. Okay. I'm so sorry. So just so you know, library will be very colorful, won't just all be white. And also, everything in the video won't all be in the library, but most of the stuff will. Sorry. Okay.
Here is what the old green screen was. This is going to be an area where students can work on work that they have unfinished. There is a TV where you can put a slideshow on like this or something that we need to see on the TV if they need to work. And the cabinets will be whiteboards so you can draw on them.
Here you can see an above view of what the library will look like, and you can see all the furniture, and you can see some rooms that will be classrooms.
So let me go back. If you can see on that bottom right corner, there's a little workspace where people can work. This is a up-close point of view of what it will look like. Our amazing librarian, Ms. Dantino, always has fun activities for us to do with friends and groups, so we can all go and sit around there. And those chairs are the ones over there. If you didn't get to try them out, make sure to do it after. The furniture is going to be really nice, and this can be a fun area where friends get to collaborate and work together.
This is kind of a view of the whole library. As you can see up close, there's another area where students can work. You can see the LED lights that will be in the library to light it up. And if you haven't noticed, the furniture has wheels, so if we want to have an event in the library that's not in the red gym or blue gym, we can push all this furniture to the side, and we will have a nice open space for nice, like, activities.
Here you can see more of the furniture, and then you can see on the back right wall that there are little reading nooks for students to enjoy their books.
Thank you. Thanks so much for listening, and we hope you like the new ideas for the library. Enjoy the new library.
Thank you. Thank you, fifth graders. I had the opportunity to see you. I think it was the first time you did your presentation and you did it to a group of first graders. You guys rocked it, I got to tell you. You know, you managed through even technological glitches. A lot of people would have froze and not moved forward, and you guys just ran with it. Really nice, very nice job. Okay, any modifications to the agenda, board members? Hearing none. Next is recognitions and achievements. The first one is the Pro Start Culinary Team, first in the state for TCD. Wheaton Warrenville South High School, Anna Gomez.
Absolutely. So we have two recognitions for you tonight. Just want to set a little bit of context. Kelly Earhart's here to introduce this recognition. I asked our staff actually around both of these recognitions just to give a little bit of context, because I think it's important. We do student recognition to make sure that we honor the amazing accomplishments of our students, but what sits behind that are tremendous opportunities for students. And so what we're going to actually highlight tonight are two incredible pathway opportunities, the first being Technology Center of DuPage, which has just an amazing set of experiences for kids. And so Kelly's going to share a little bit about that opportunity and introducing our recognition tonight. So Kelly, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Earhart. I'm the department chair in the Counseling Center at Wheaton Warrenville South. We're proud to recognize Anna Gomez, who is not here today, but she's from Wheaton Warrenville South High School. She's in the Professional Cooking, Baking, and Service Program at Technology Center of DuPage. TCD offers DuPage County Area High School juniors and seniors 20 career and technical programs as part of their high school curriculum. Through TCD programs, students have the opportunity to earn transferable college credit, prepare for industry, state, or national licensing and certification exams, qualify for apprenticeships, or earn scholarships and grants towards college. District 200's Career Pathways Program aligns with the training and opportunities TCD offers. District 200 students are able to attend TCD during the morning session five days a week throughout the whole school year and learn hands-on job skills for half of their school day. They earn high school and potential college credit while completing their TCD program over one or two years. On March 18th, Anna and her TCD teammates took first place at the Illinois Pro Start Invitational. On May 2nd through 4th, Anna's team will compete against the best in the nation at the 2023 National Pro Start Invitational in Washington, DC. Both the state and national competitions are hosted by the Illinois Restaurant Association Educational Foundation. Both competitions give budding culinary and restaurant management students a chance to network with top national chefs and industry professionals. Congratulations to Anna.
Thank you. Next recognition is the District 200 Flying Tigers Basketball Team, silver medalist.
So Val DeFresco is going to come up and introduce this and likewise. So if you want to visit an absolutely amazing facility in District 200, you have to take a visit to our Transition Center. Unbelievable opportunities for students, and Val's going to share a little bit about the program at the Transition Center as we introduce our Flying Tigers.
So like Dr. Schuler said, I'm Valerie DeFresco, the Director of Special Education, and I support some of our specialized special education programming, K-22, so that includes our sale program, Essentials, Transition, and Special Olympics. I work closely with our Executive Director, Erica Ekstrom, in supporting all of these programs and really looking at how we're expanding our opportunities for students. As the administrator of the Transition Program, we support students through the school year of their 22nd birthday, and our team works so hard to prepare for students for life after they leave our educational system. The team collects information to help students reach their goals, and that could include vocational work experiences, independent living skills, and connect with any resources to support them. Our goal is to help students learn in the setting they will need to apply their skills, and there is a heavy emphasis on community-based instruction, which Dr. Schuler experienced firsthand. And this occurs daily to really help students generalize skills to the settings that they'll need them in for life. I do welcome any board members to come and visit us. It is a really cool experience. It's my second year working with Transition, and it is a little community that we just embrace and a special place to be. While they support goals associated with their educational plans, a big part is also helping our young adults build and maintain friendships. The school team helps plan students' planned social events and also encourages recreational leisure activities. This leads me back to one of the reasons why we're here to celebrate tonight, and that is our Special Olympics programming. Our district offers four sports throughout the year. That's basketball, track and field, bocce, and bowling. It varies by sport, but generally, we offer to students middle school through Transition. And we have a big fundraiser once a year, Bowl for the Torch, and in my two years being here, it is really supported by the community. It's a great experience for all just to kind of experience that opportunity to celebrate everyone. Our basketball team, the Flying Tigers, is comprised of students from our two high school teams and Transition team, and it was led this year by coaches Gianna Hayner and Dana Eden. The team did bring home the silver medal this year, and we couldn't be prouder. It was very, very heartwarming to see the schools and community rally behind our student athletes. Each school planned a state send-off for our athletes and showed their pride as they celebrated their return with the silver medal. Of course, all of this was supported by the wonderful families we have here today and community. The best part for me honestly was seeing our students and how rewarding this has been for them. While we talk about Special Olympics, it is their team, their community, and what brings a smile to their face as you have conversations. You mention Special Olympics, and our students light up. So at this time, we would like to recognize our student athletes, and I'd like to bring up our coaches, Gianna Hayner and Dana Eden, to recognize our athletes.
All right. Tonight, we have Ivan Del Rio, Kevin Walsh, Frankie Severino, Maeve Myera, Faith Barilla, Theo Sackman, Lin Dao, and John Lamanapp.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Flying Tigers. Next up is my board report. I've only got a couple of things. First thing is, Dr. Schuler, Mr. Long, and I had an opportunity to attend the TCD dinner, where we did get to meet Anna Gomez. What an unbelievable event, board members. Now, this has taken a couple of years with COVID that they hadn't had it, but definitely come back for that next year. Johnson School, I had an opportunity to do a visit there last week. I got to see two pilot classrooms for the new ELA program. Extremely interactive. I believe it was Bookworms that they were doing. Students were excited, staff was excited. I also went to get to visit a fifth grade classroom and see their interactive math opportunity and first graders with a writing prompt of, "Where would you go if you could fly?" It was very exciting. Earlier this week, I had an opportunity to visit Wheat North. Mr. Biskin was able to show me a really great use of the LLC space. I couldn't believe how crowded the LLC was with students working in there, with opportunities with blended learning and things like that. It was packed, and it was exactly what you'd hoped to see in an LLC. I also got to see, it was a beautiful day, and the students were out in the courtyard, and that was another working space and eating lunch, and some of them were out there working, and it was really wonderful. All the Whittier people just left. I wanted to say I got to see a few of my former teammates, and some of you don't know, but this was the first building I ever stepped foot in in District 200 30 years ago. So for me, it's like being back home again. And I can't think of a better way to spend my last regular board meeting than here. I got to look at my, those are the windows of my old classroom up there, because this gym didn't exist when I first started. So it was great to see this. So glad to be back, and I want to be invited for the 100th birthday. I want to come back for that. So that's all I have. Board public comments? We don't have any? Okay. My goodness. I think it's the first time in two years. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. Just a couple of things I'll share under my report tonight. I actually want to start with a couple of introductions. One, I'm not sure if he's still in here, but I want to introduce Ashley Weltler. A little bit later in your agenda, as you approve the personnel report, you're going to be approving Ashley's appointment as the principal at Monroe Middle School next year. So Ashley, welcome. Certainly happy, excited to have you join our team here in District 200. I also want to reintroduce, he's not a new face to District 200, but is going to be in a new seat next year as next, first board meeting of the next school year starts. Mr. Matt Biskin will be the Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services as Dr. Kyle assumes his position as superintendent. Mr. Biskin is going to be sliding over into this role. So, Mr. Biskin, we're excited to have you. I also just wanted to mention three other things really quickly. Two thank yous, and then one final reminder about a couple of dates. So the two thank yous. Next week on Wednesday, we'll have our last Citizens Advisory Committee meeting of this school year, and I think the board knows and appreciates the volunteer service of the 37 people that participate on CAC. Each year, we recognize at our last meeting members of CAC that are rolling off the committee after having served for five years. And I've really been amazed now that that committee, I think, has been in place for seven years. Every year, we have a crop of folks that have stayed on all five years. We actually seldom have somebody leave the committee, which to me, I think, speaks to some value that obviously they're finding in the opportunity to engage and interact with us. And so I didn't do this last year, but thought it appropriate to do this year. I just wanted to share and thank the members of the committee who will be rolling off after five years this year. That's Carrie Bebar, Jennifer Castino, Brooke Gennaro, John Houlihan, Daniel Cruz, and Mia Martich. Will all be rolling off after having served five years. So on your behalf at our meeting next week, we've got a little thank you for them, but I will thank them on the board's behalf. Second thank you is this morning, I had the great pleasure, so the Illinois Administrator, IASA, it's a superintendent's kind of state-level association within our region. They do a volunteer breakfast every April, and each superintendent has an opportunity to thank two community volunteers. And so this morning, I had the great pleasure of welcoming or asking Susan and Chris to join me as they roll off of the board this year. There is no more selfless volunteer job in the community than that of serving on the Board of Education. You all know the time that goes into this role. So I just wanted to thank Susan and Chris and thank them for joining me. I'll send around a little program that just has a little write-up of each of the volunteers if you'd like to see the kind words that we shared, but I want to thank them. And then finally, just want to mention a couple of dates coming up. So before we get to the May 10th meeting, where we will reorganize the Board of Education, on May the 3rd, that is a Wednesday, the Student Excellence Foundation is doing their Celebrate Our Stars activity. So if you do not have that on your calendar, please put it on your calendar and join us for that event. It's at Wheat North in the Commons. Get a great dinner out of it, but also just a great opportunity to meet and recognize some of our teachers that have been recognized, some of our former staff members that are being recognized. Just a really wonderful event. And then I want to mention that as we get toward the end of the year as well, on Wednesday, May 31st, is our annual District 200 Service Awards and Retirement Celebration. So whether you are on the board right now or will be on the board after that date, you are welcome to that event, and I'd love to have you join us on the 31st. I think that's all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Next up is the consent agenda. Approval to post middle school novels for review. Approval of snack vending contract renewal. Approval of contract extension for physical education uniforms. Approval of the 2023-2024 student fee schedule. Acceptance and approval of the 2021-2022 financial audit. Acceptance and approval of the 2021-2022 single audit. Approval to purchase network switches. Approval of antivirus and endpoint security software for District 200 network devices. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, March 8th, 2023, open and closed. March 25th, 2023, special meeting open. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to November 21st is allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, do you have any other information?
Yeah, I just have two things that I want to share with the board. Number one, under item four, the approval of the student fee schedule, wanted to point out actually two things on the fee schedule. One, just a reminder, a couple of years ago, kind of in the middle of the pandemic, we cut our student fees in half and have never brought those back up. We have left them at the level that we set them at, and I think that was an appropriate decision, but just wanted to mention, share that, that all of the registration fees remain at the reduced level. One fee in particular that we did lower coming into this year specifically is our tuition fee at Jefferson. We're doing that because there is a very focused effort at Jefferson moving into next year to blend more of our classrooms at Jefferson. That's built on two things. One, best practice for the kids at Jefferson that we're serving to some targets that have been set by the state in terms of the number of students that we're serving through blended programs versus serving through... that we're serving through blended programs versus serving through a self-contained program. And so lowering the fee, I think, will allow us to hopefully invite more tuition students into Jefferson. We're looking to expand that enrollment by about 120 students for next year. It's not going to increase the overall sections at Jefferson, just the number of students that are being served through blended programs. But that was something that's been on the radar for a long time. We couldn't have even dreamed about it in the old building because we simply didn't have the space. We could dream about it in the new building, but the pandemic hit as soon as we opened the new building and so space was still kind of of an issue and so we're at a point that I think it's a time to focus on that. So I just wanted to mention that, that that was the background behind it. Second thing, I'm going to have Dr. O'Keefe just give a quick explanation of one of the things in the single audit. I think anytime that the community sees a finding in an audit, it raises some concern with folks and so I just want to make sure we clearly explain the one finding in that single audit.
Got it. Thank you, Dr. Schuler. So I'll start with this phrase, "The bark is bigger than the bite." So the single audit itself is a federal audit that was required of all public school districts throughout the US that received more than $750,000 in revenue from the federal government. That can come through title grants, IDEA grants. We've seen ESAR dollars explode over the most recent years. It includes our National School Lunch Program. So anything that is specific to the federal reimbursement of expenditures is included in the single audit. The single audit is a separate and distinct audit run outside of your annual financial report because that audit is specifically given to the federal government. It gets posted on websites at the federal government. Nick Baker-Tilly, our audit firm, and myself authorized the posting of that data there. And if you recall last month when Nick from Baker-Tilly was here, we had only had the draft copy of the AFR at that point. We did not have a draft copy of the single audit or our financial statements. So I understand that the information as it looks inside the single audit, looks a bit more detrimental, but realistically, here's the difference of what the auditors found that we disagreed with, but we had to abide by. Simply put, $1.9 million worth of reimbursement related to capital projects that occurred over the summer of 2021. We booked that revenue in the ONM fund where we thought we should book that revenue. Ultimately, the auditors came back and said that revenue should be booked specifically where the expenditure occurred, which is inside the Capital Projects Fund. The rationale behind us transferring money and moving, building up fund balance inside of ONM, transferring those dollars out, didn't matter from the federal audit side of things. The federal audit said if you didn't book that revenue where the expenditure was booked, then it's a material weakness. So that's why I say the bark is bigger than the bite. It did not change your AFR, the numbers that you saw in the draft were the exact numbers you saw. And then those revenues that we received this year in a similar fashion to reimbursements for projects from last summer have already been booked in the Capital Projects Fund to make sure that we don't run into the same situation again. So it was no change in the value of our overall audit, no change in the value of dollars available to you and managed by the Board of Education. It was merely they disagreed with where we booked the revenue. And because of the size of it, it was considered material.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Just a comment on the last part of what you said, Dr. O'Keefe. The, you know, in accounting kind of terms, the materiality number has to do with the dollars. If this had been $10,000, it wouldn't be material. So it's, and...
Yeah, it was material because of the size of the spend in capital projects. If it was something significantly less, like you mentioned, maybe $10,000, it would not have been material.
Yeah, and so, I mean, at the end of the day, it's a mistake, but it really has to do with the dollar amount and it's not, it's not a, really even, it came down to a difference of opinion. So I... I just think that the wording is a little stronger. Like you said, the bark is worse than the bite. It's, you know...
And in fairness to Baker-Tilly, they're responsible for using specific verbiage within the single audit. It's not something that I or Baker-Tilly would have the ability just to arbitrarily change. That wording is consistent with wording you will find in any other single audit where a material weakness has been found, regardless of the school district.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the point I'm trying to make is it's, you'd rather not have it, but it's really not a significant issue.
Clarification. Isn't the Capital Projects Fund a sub-fund of ONM, if I recall?
Sorry, say that again?
Isn't Capital Projects a sub-fund of ONM?
It is not. It is a separate fund.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I have one. With regard to Jefferson, with increasing the number of blended classrooms, would we still need to have, or would we need to have more teachers in those blended classrooms if we're servicing children with higher level needs?
Not, we won't need more teachers. We will likely need some additional paraprofessionals to support the programs, but the core staff, no. So the, and that's true now, right? If you go into a blended class or you go into an instructional or self-contained class, there's one teacher in the class, no matter what.
Okay. And we will provide aid service?
We will make sure that classrooms are supported, absolutely.
And we're not doing away with self-contained classrooms for students whose needs may best be met?
No, actually the contrary. What I would tell you is that we're making an effort to ensure that we're servicing students through the most appropriate model. And I think this change is probably a bit overdue in terms of the adjustment that we're making, but no, we're not going to sacrifice service level for students.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just had one question back to the audit. So, timing of the audits, it feels like we're about four to six months behind where we've been in the past?
Not quite that long. So the audit's due to the ROE no later than December 15th. With the changeover, with losing Kim, our Controller Treasurer last March, a lot of the legwork that typically would be done over the summer in advance of getting prepped for the audit, I wasn't able to do it just because physically was doing two different jobs and then we brought Jordan in and he spent the first three months of his job focusing on understanding his job. By the time we were able to circle back with Baker-Tilly and educate that we're ready to go, they'd already booked services with other clients and their timeline strung things out. If you recall last year, so fiscal year '21, they delivered the AFR to you in December, but didn't get you the single audit until April. So this time around, things were later. They will not be this late next year. We've got the right team in place. We've already begun talking about scheduling with Baker-Tilly to make sure that whatever it is that we have to accomplish with them dedicated to us gets done in the timeframe that they set that time aside for.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mrs. Booten? Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, so we please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up is the policy posting consent agenda. First one is approval to post revised policy 7.340 student records for public review and comments. And the next one is approval to post revised policy 8.80 gifts to the district for public review and comments. Is there any items board members want removed from the policy posting consent agenda?
Does that mean to ask a question about it?
No, we're going to get a chance to ask questions.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so these were policies that had previously, well, one of them had previously been brought to the board and then we pulled off of the agenda, I think, based on some questions. The other was a question that came up several meetings ago related to gifts to the district and your policy committee reviewed language on both of these that ultimately decided on 7.340 not to adjust any of the language in the policy. And so that is recommended for posting as the revision from press had come through. 880, there was a minor revision to that. That was the policy where it spoke to, or had the phrase viewpoint neutral as it applied to gifts. And so we pulled viewpoint neutral out of this specific portion of the policy where it talked directly to the gift and moved it to a section of the policy that talked about the process for accepting a gift, which I think is the appropriate point for, appropriate place in the policy for viewpoint neutral to be. So that was reviewed both by your attorney and then your policy committee and is recommended for posting this evening, or for you to approve for posting.
Board members, any questions or comments on these two? Mrs. Blatter, I think you do.
I just have a question. As I said, I think the last time it came before is policy number, 7340. So adding the word "the superintendent or designee may recommend" to the board a student biometric information, so there's no possible way to add those three words. I know that you feel it's inferred, but I think we should make it clear personally. But I know the policy committee reviewed that and felt differently. So I will just disagree. And along with that, second question. I think we have an instance of using a student biometric.
A couple of unique circumstances around the use of technology. So some students that have needs that may require a piece of, like a biometric login to a piece of technology.
So is that a case where it should have come to us, like as a proposal?
I would have to go back to track exactly when that went into play. I don't know when that modification was put into play and whether this language was in play. I would say moving forward, if we are employing, I think, a new use of like biometric information, it should come to the board. I think that, to me, is clear out of this policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten?
Second.
Second by, who was it? Mrs. Kolevitz? Mrs. Hutchinson, so we please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Kolevitz? Yes.
No, just because I disagree with not adding those three words, so no.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next up is action items. The first one is adoption of resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time first, second, and third-year non-tenured certified staff. Dr. Schuler, any questions?
I don't know, no additional information. I think the board is familiar with this action this time each year. We do have a release both of, one, these are honorable dismissals. These are teachers that were on one-year contracts because it is either a grant-funded program or a program we're not certain about with kind of staffing allocations. In most cases, a lot of these teachers are hired back, but at this step, we have to take this step now or we don't have any flexibility should we need to make an adjustment. So, and that's true of both action items you're going to consider.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time first, second, and third-year non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of Illinois School Code Section 24-11 as presented.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon, second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, so we please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes. Next action item is adoption of resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, non-tenured certified staff. Dr. Schuler, any other information?
No additional information.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Just one comment, and this is maybe more forward-looking. It'd be interesting to track data on the number of teachers we bring back versus we don't bring back or maybe they go to a different district. Potential data point that might be worthwhile.
Anything else? Okay, I ask for a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code Section 24-11 as presented.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booten. Mrs. Hutchinson, so we please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes. We don't have any discussion items tonight. Written reports attached to the agenda was the monthly financial reports, FOIA report, board communication log, Citizens Advisory Committee report.
Mrs. Crabtree, may I just make a comment, please, about those? I just wanted to take a moment to remind the, to remind the community or maybe even let them know about what a FOIA is. And I want to use myself as an example because when I started working on, from the community side, on the 2017 referendum, I actually did not know that, I thought the way that you got information from the district was to submit a FOIA request. And I remember I submitted like four or five FOIA requests and just for some general information. And Dr. Kyle's predecessor, Dr. Rammer, called me and after I submitted him and he said, "Happy to do it." And he just said, but he's like, "Susan," he goes, "You know, you can just pick up the phone and call me, right?" And I was like, "I actually didn't," you know? And so, and he's like, "Yeah," he goes, "If you have questions, just call me and I'm happy to answer them." And I'm like, "Okay," I think one of them was an actual thing I needed to FOIA, but the rest of them were just questions. And so I just would like to remind our community that to call, to talk, create dialogue with our administrators, with your buildings, with your teachers, with your board members, a lot of these are simple questions. We have seen that there has been a significant increase in FOIA requests that take a tremendous amount of time. And this is getting to the point where Dr. Schuler has informed us that it's certainly not definitive thing, but we may have to explore hiring a full-time person for FOIA requests, which I think we really pride ourselves on being very lean in this district and that could potentially be the salary of a teacher. And I just, I just, it's a little upsetting to me that we are getting to this point where we have an assistant superintendent who can't do their job because they are spending their time redacting emails from a year ago. And so I'm not saying we shouldn't be transparent. I'm not saying we have anything to hide. I'm just saying, let's start a dialogue again and with the community members and the administration that if you have questions, please reach out. Not everything needs to be a FOIA request and that we need to just get back to some of that civility and I hope that we can get back to there's certain things that need to be FOIAed, but a lot of things could just be a conversation and I hope that we can get back to that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Booten. Next up is reports from board members. Are there any board members that have anything they'd like to share? Okay, topics for future discussion, the middle school facility plan. Our next right...
Sorry, I have a topic. Sorry. So I do have a topic for a future discussion. I would like to ask the HR Policy Committee to consider an addition to policy 2.105 Ethics and Gift Ban. In point number two, under prohibited political activity, no board member shall intentionally use any district property or resources in connection with any political activity. The recommendation I would like to bring to the board is the addition of candidates for the Board of Education. And I say this over several election cycles, I have seen, and I'm going to include myself in this in just a moment. So I have seen candidates take their campaign pictures on school property in front of school buildings, candidates taking pictures of people holding their campaign signs in front of school building entrances, candidates sending mass email campaigns to our teachers and staff through our district email, candidates posting pictures on their campaign social media pages of social events where student faces are visible and identifiable. And as we know, several parents have not given permission for their child to be photographed on school property for a variety of reasons and that clearly violates those wishes. Some of this is covered in policy 8.25 Advertising and Distributing Materials in Schools Provided by Non-School Entities. In the section of Commercial Companies and Political Candidates or Parties, it says, "No individual or entity may advertise or promote its interests by using the names or pictures of the school district, any school district or facility, staff members, or students except as authorized by and consistent with administrator procedures and approved by the board." And as I saw this, I violated that policy when I campaigned because I did use pictures of school buildings. There were never any people in it or anything, but I went and visited each principal in the school and I took a picture of the school from the outside and I posted a social media post that I had visited that school. So I say that as myself too. But I do think that it would be beneficial to... But I do think that it would be beneficial to specifically name candidates for school board in that policy, and I also, because I believe that if a person is running for a seat on the Board of Education, they should be accountable for following board policy as soon as they file with the county. And I would also ask that, I know Dr. Schuler meets with each candidate after they file and provides them with a folder of materials about the district, and it might be helpful to include both, a copy of both of these policies, both 2.105 and 8.25 in that folder, so that they're aware of what they can and cannot do with and on school property. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Booten. I think I'm at, next regular board meeting is May 10th. Announcements, April 26th is Committee of the Whole School Service Center. May 10th is the board reorganization meeting, 7:00 PM School Service Center. I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemptions, 5 ILCS 120/2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 1, 5 ILCS 120, Subparagraph 2, slash 2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 2, and 5 ILCS 120/2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 9. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hanlon. Ms. Hutchinson, so we please call the roll.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
There is action expected following the closed session.
[inaudible]
You were?
Yes.
I was trying to laugh.
I was trying to get up.
Oh, I didn't know.
Child, it's like, you know, kindergarten or something.
Yeah, you know.
Last regular, well, I'll start the tenet meeting, but...
I didn't know that.
That is.
I didn't know that.
Close out the windows to my classroom. So, you weren't here when I was telling the story before. So, when they were putting this edition on, this is an edition, this gym, this was just field here, they put boards on my windows up there, and a bird knocked the board open one day and came into my room. I had to call down to the office.
So, that was the same color as the outside?
Yeah, this is the outside.